I plead in order to ask you to join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, I'd ask if you'd call the roll place?
Dave Burris.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritterbush.
Here.
Ray Eckert.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. And again, I remind the council that if there is a conflict of interest for any item that we would be voting on tonight, I would ask you to alert the entire council prior to voting. You have in your packages the minutes from the January 6th council meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 6th council meeting?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the...
I didn't get the second one, so it was me. Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. If there are any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before you are the claims, the first is the bills in between for $181,448. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $181,448.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. There are any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills in between are approved. You also have in your packages current claims for $24,163.4. Again, looking for a motion to approve those current claims.
Make a motion to approve current claims, the amount of $24,163.4.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve current claims. There are any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that those current claims are approved. We also have some 2019 accounts payable listed in your packages. Those were $13,517.98. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019 accounts payable. We have one amendment, and that's tabling an item on page number three. From Rod's Excavating. I don't feel good about asking to table this one. Rod is a very outstanding contractor around the community. His reputation is just above board. I'm asking that we table it because there's some dispute about who actually incurred the bill. The city did not contact Rod's Excavating to do the work. There was a water line that was cut that needed taking care of. So I would ask that time be given to Tracy and the staff to figure out who actually contacted them and who's responsible for this bill, whether it be the person that cut the line or whether it's some kind of city responsibility. So that's the reason I'm asking to have a table. Not that I don't feel wrong should be paid for his services, but the appropriate people should pay him.
Second.
So the amended amount would be $12,956.75.
Second. Okay, it's been moved that we amend the amount payable to $12,956.76, is that correct, Robert?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay. And appreciate the reasons. And I'd ask, John, if you could kind of take the lead on researching that and get a good story, and we'll look at that in public works. We should have a public works meeting prior to the next council meeting. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the amended amount of accounts payable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That new amount is approved. Next item on our agenda is communications from the public. Have they any communications from the public? See none?
No.
Please come over here.
Okay, please come forward. It's hard to see out there, and we're not trying to ignore you.
Hello, my name is Deborah Johnston. I live at 1023 Evanston Avenue, but I've also lived here since 1958. I'm here with concerns about the potential of history repeating itself here in town with the concern of our sandstone building that has just recently been cordoned off. And I have to say that I don't know the whole story, but, you know, everyone talks around town and pick up bits and pieces. But from what I've just seen and heard and in the newspaper and whatnot, it seems like it's just an easy decision that, oh, this building has some issues and it's so old, let's just take it down. Well, these sandstone buildings are Hot Springs. And we had a whole hullabaloo and a whole society built on, or a whole group of people saving our sandstones decades ago. And so I think it's imperative that we take a step back and prove to the citizens of Hot Springs that this building absolutely cannot be saved with either mudjacking it. It's my understanding that the foundation is in dire circumstances. But so was the old city library across from the post office. The back wall was sinking, and the friends of the library did all their thing and said that they couldn't do, use that building. And then it was sold to Steve Shimman, who mudjacked the back wall, and it's a perfectly good building now. So I implore you to find a specialist in these types of issues and the historic aspect of building process and some masons, I don't know what all, but mudjackers. Get the perfect people to look at the thing and see if it can't be saved. It's my understanding also that if that building goes down, the building next to it could be next because they all kind of are connected. So we can't have a domino effect happen here. And in addition to this building, there are other buildings in town, like the one between City Hall and the theater, that are just sitting there. And I don't know what the issues or the laws are pertaining to owning historic buildings in Hot Springs, but if they do get grant money through the Deadwood Historic Grant Process or whatever process there is to get monies to help preserve these historic buildings, aren't there requirements that they have to restore the buildings? And I believe this building, the West Oak Building, that I initially brought up, did have grant monies given to it for that. And so where was that money spent? And how can we save these buildings? Granted, it could be a major expense for the city, but these buildings are our life. A lot of them are.
Well, I certainly echo your concern. We were very distraught after hearing a report of a professional engineer that we had along with our development coordinator and our city administrator do another inspection of the inside of the building. Unfortunately, we had to get a court order to get entrance to that. And the reason it's cordoned off, it's been determined by the professional engineer that it is a safety hazard to the community.
But can it be saved?
That's a... We were waiting for a report from the engineer, and that's a question that still remains to be answered. I think we have to go back to the root cause, and I think you kind of hit around it. We've got a Hot Springs citizen for progress. I think they should more actively be named non-citizens for destroying our sandstones. Because we've had another building that we've torn down, as you mentioned, there's another vacant building that has not had anything done to it. But just to give you a quick outline and summary, the building itself does have a destabilized foundation because they improperly dug out some of the dirt underneath it. That's clearly visible in pictures. But the big problem is with the sagging and leaking roof. And what that has caused is a center roof beam to deflect, probably about two feet that it has deflected. It's a timber beam. Timber is very difficult to have a large safety factor when you design for timber. And when it's rotting, that further complicates the issue. You just don't know how much strength you have. That building has leaked to where on the floor below the top ceiling has also rotted. In fact, our city administrator, when he went in, just about fell through that floor. And that beam also is rotting. And again, if those beams fail, what they will have a tendency to do is to pull the building down, and that's why it's a safety hazard. Obviously, there's enough money available. There are ways to save everything, but there's also a lot of risk involved, both financially and physically, in going and repairing it. So we're in the process of waiting for a report from the professional engineer. The South Dakota Historical Society also has a voice in whether that building should be saved or could be saved and can. So it's not an immediate decision that anyone has made that it's going to necessarily be torn down. There's other mitigating circumstances also. As you mentioned, the building next door is somewhat threatened by that. So we're hoping and praying that by some miracle, it's a beautiful building, we don't want to lose it, but if it's deemed that it's unsafe and unsafe to save, we do have a responsibility as a city to ensure that the safety of the community is maintained.
Do we have a process to protect the rest of the buildings in town? There's like the one I mentioned by the theater, there's the ones on the corner adjacent up right across from Ace Hardware.
Well, we as a city, we can't get involved in what private individuals do nor other than permitting. I know we do have another historical building that's being renovated, and we just recently discovered some problems with that, and we're working with the contractor and owner to get those solved so those foundation issues will not mitigate or cause additional problems. But I'm concerned, and I'm going to try to research, because I'm concerned also that the alleged nonprofit organization that owns those buildings did get funds for restoration. And what's happened to those funds? Who monitors those funds? And it certainly isn't the city's responsibility, but I would think that the organization that does delve out those funds would have the opportunity to say, to track and see what actually has been accomplished, rather than trying to undermine and destroy that they would, certainly those funds would be used to build up and save. We've had, we do have ongoing legal issues that I can't address now with the organization that based on another building that was torn down in another empty spot that you see along River Street, that this organization at one time owned a historic building.
Well, we've got it, I'm putting it on your shoulders, so. And there's a lot of people, if you look at the Facebook chatter, that there's a lot of people concerned about this.
Well, we are too, and thank you very much for coming forward. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to expand upon my neighbor's concern. Robert Plou, 109 South Connor Street, which is a residence that's also in the historic communities.
Can you speak into the mic?
Please, yeah, please speak into the mic, Robert. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight, and thank you for your selfless service to the people of Hot Springs, and I sincerely mean that. I would like to address what has happened to the building at 717 North River Street. I would like you to seriously consider what it means that we as a community have let this building, that we all agree is a historic building, how we have let the building deteriorate to the point of having to condemn it. In a soul-searching endeavor, it may be helpful to consider the first settlers who came to this little valley, the confluence of a cold brook and a stream fed by a hot spring, the most unique setting. Imagine the inspiration they felt, inspiration that generated the enthusiasm and the energy to create such a monumental, thriving, and prosperous community, to quarry local sandstone and to erect a group of amazing, beautiful buildings. We all know in our hearts that a very special gift has been handed down to us. That issued tonight is how we fail to honor that gift, when we allow our community treasure to fall into a state of disuse and disrepair. Forgive me for making comparisons, but I see our neighbor in the North Hills, Spearfish, making national headlines for innovation. Keystone, Hill City, Custer are prospering, yet Hot Springs reflects a far less favorable state. Half a dozen buildings are empty, or underused, or falling down. Everyone in town must search their soul and ask why, not to find fault, but to determine where we go from here. There are a few people that bring life into our town, and I ask, what have you done for them? While our basic needs are met, thanks to the diligence of the city government, many, many kids growing up here can't wait to leave for any fair opportunity. If we could please take a step back and reflect upon what this community is about, I believe it would be incumbent upon us all to draw a line and hold that our historical heritage is too important to lose, too important to allow it to crumble away. I ask you tonight to commit new vigor and resources and energy that attracts greater opportunity and greater prosperity. And it starts right now with a pledge to save this building. There are many people much smarter than me, engineers, planners, lenders, developers, and so forth, that can help us reverse the decline of our architectural heritage, and they will indeed help, but only if we embody the resolve and commitment to preserve that heritage and honor the inspiration and creativity of the founders. Thank you again for the opportunity to voice my sincere and heartfelt views, and I hope you will take them to heart as well.
Thank you very much, Robert, and I will disagree with you a little bit on the fact that this community is not moving forward. We work very, very hard to save the VA. We've been a federal town. We've got a very active VA. Save the VA community, our state home. We had to fight hard to keep that here in Hot Springs. It was. Fall River Health Services has expanded. We've had record building permits in the last couple of years. So I would say that we're not moving backwards, but we're moving forward. We have a functional council. We have an outstanding city staff that's working hard to move our community forward. And certainly, we agree with you, the history of our community is very, very important, and we'll do anything and everything we can to try to save that building. But again, we also have limited resources, and we just, and we have a responsibility, as I mentioned before, to protect the community. Are there any other communications from the public?
My name's Luke Broyles. I live at 145 123rd. Just like the state, earlier, about a couple hours ago, I read seven pages of ordinances from different cities where they protected their historical buildings from demolition like we have.
What's that?
Can't hear.
Anyway, I read seven pages of different ordinances from San Francisco to New York on cities protecting their historical properties. New York cities were upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court. Cities, counties, and states do have the ability to step in when they know that buildings are falling down. Not only that, the city holds a $70,000 lien against Hot Springs citizens for reform or progress. Just curious, they haven't paid that in the last four years, so how much are we expecting demolition on the well choke that cost?
It's going to be expensive, and that's the legal matter that we're working on is collecting on that.
At a certain point, I feel that it's going to be cheaper to probably mudjack. And other cities do have ordinances where they contracted out and then placed liens on the building.
So what's mudjacking going to do to the building?
Support it?
Pardon?
Resupport it?
Is that the problem?
I'm not aware.
Well, then how do you know that mudjacking is going to help it?
Do you know it's going to help it?
Yes.
Okay.
As I mentioned before, the problems in the rotted beams that will pull the foundations down, and that's the major problem. Where soil has been moved away from the supports of the foundation is another secondary problem along one of the exterior walls, and mudjacking is not going to help that.
Okay.
Any other communications from the public?
Hello. I'm Marty Meyer, 102 South Connor. And I would reiterate what Bob said, appreciate the chance to express ourselves here this evening, and appreciate everything you guys are doing. I just want to echo their sentiments. I know that there's obviously a lot of variables with this sort of a, you know, dealing with buildings like this. And also, I had an opportunity to speak with Bob and with Bill at the Shetland Bank when they explained some of the complexity of what's going on with the building, obviously with the road project as well. That's a concern when you do have buildings that could be in a state of disrepair, and you're going to have heavy equipment pounding on the street, then you need to take care of that. So I appreciate that the city's moving forward with something. I feel that, as you can see, I mean, I've sat up here, and you don't get a lot of public comment like I would like to see sometimes with issues that people are passionate about, but it's obvious that people are passionate about this, and Hot Springs should be passionate about this. These are historic landmarks, and I don't have any answers right now specifically, but I hope that with this kind of passion and interest, that we can start to put forward a conversation about what we can do, what we can look at from the state. It seems very, to me, it seems criminal that these people received money and have done nothing with these buildings. And I'm surprised that there isn't, I know we're looking into that and approaching that as well, but it really, it seems as though something should be done legally, and I hope that the state will consider that. I hope that before we look at it, and as Luke said as well, it can cost just as much to tear things down sometimes as it can to build them up. So if we're paying engineers to take a look at it, and they're saying that it needs to be torn down, maybe we should look at getting some money from an engineering firm to say, what's it going to take to build it back up and to resupport it as well? So I know there's lots of considerations, and I know there's a lot of options, I perhaps haven't been explored yet, so I'm just here to echo that sentiment, and everybody else is here, and we do not want to lose our sandstone buildings. We were listed as, I can't remember how many years ago, one of the top 10 historical, most beautifully historic cities. I can't remember the exact, it was in a...
The National Register for Historic...
Thank you.
What's this?
Yes.
National Trust for Historic Preservation.
Absolutely. We were in the top 10, right, for that?
Yes.
Yeah, nationwide. So those buildings are what have done that for us, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Any other comments? Okay, see none, we'll move on. Please step up or yell, because we can't see back in the audience, apologize.
It's a little blinding up here if you sit up.
Hello. I'm Casey Carruthers. I live at 1 Canyon View Circle, and I appreciate what people have said before, they have my sentiments. I appreciate what I hear the city is doing. I just want to offer my time, my energy to help in this, if there's any way. I mean, there are a number of people here who are interested, perhaps a committee that we could pull together, look at pooling resources, because I have a bit of experience with historical preservation. I know the building can be saved. Again, it's time, money, and the rest of it, but what can I do? I'd like to offer that, so whatever situation there is, and I realize there's a bit of, in fact, twenty, it goes on now, but if I can help find out more of that, I would be delighted.
Thank you for the offer. Thank you very much, Casey. Appreciate the offer. Are there any other comments?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Of course, I've got to give my two cents. Sorry, I've just got to give my two cents to you guys.
So Greg, 329 North River. Hey, I just want to, I heard all the things that they said and the thing about, thing about the city not moving forward. I'm going to tell you, it was gone for a while. They came back. This city is beautiful. We have beautiful people, and we have the best little city in America. You talk about the Evans plunge and the growth that the city's taken over from that. Look at the golf course. I mean, look at the library, look at the things that the city has grown. The concern I have about that building is whether it goes down or stays up. I think the city's got a right way. You're looking into it legally, you've gone into it structurally, you've got engineers looking at it. If it has to be taken down, shame on the whole entire city. We allowed this group to come in, take a few buildings, one's already been torn down, one's about to be torn down. The building next to City Hall, and you all see it every single time you walk in, you look at the breezeway right by the front door, there sits a beautiful piece of sandstone that's fallen off that building. What is being done about that building? It's the same group of people. I hope and pray that something's being done, because we don't want to lose three. So please, 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 and thank you again for everything that this council does for the city.
owned, but by the same individuals, so. Any other comments?
Good evening, council. Mike Summer, 549 Culver Avenue. I guess the Welsh Oak is the big elephant in the room. The other buildings that are in town, though, that are not occupied, that are owned by out-of-town owners and that are sitting, I would like to know what the ordinance is for those owners and I guess why they're still in disrepair. As far as when they, when they purchase it, is there an ordinance on the books that states they have a certain amount of time to move forward with repairs or can they just sit up?
As far as I know, there's no ordinance requiring, you know, obviously, if there is a building permit taken out, our development coordinator has access to the building and can, for example, the building is being renovated on River Street, has been inspected, they've had an engineer that has shored the building up while it's being rebuilt. So when the development coordinator is able to get involved, he can inspect. But as far as I know, there's no ordinance. John, are you aware of any ordinance that says just because somebody buys a building that we have the right to go in and inspect that? That ordinance is not on the book as far as I know.
Okay. Well, I guess I would like to also echo what Casey had said. I would like to offer my assistance with putting something together to get these dead being owners to do something with these properties. It does no good for them to sit there empty for a decade or longer until it gets to a point of disrepair and being unstable. So I'm offering my half the ring as well.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. I'm just, I hope you're getting all these names down or offering them because I think that's one of the things that won't, excuse me, certainly help us move forward if there's any opportunity at all to save this, this building. Are there any other communications from the public?
Hi, Mike Carruthers, One Canyon View Circle, I'll be short. My wife and I, Casey, moved to the area two and a half years ago. We now live in the beautiful city. It is, obviously, we voted with our feet. It's a lovely place to live. We want to continue to live here. One of the incredible assets is the old buildings that, you know, lists five things of why we moved to Hot Springs. That's, that's one of them. What you've heard tonight is this particular specific building is the lightning rod for the bigger issue of what can Hot Springs do in the future to evolve policy on protecting this asset? And I would suggest that thorough understanding be obtained about what other cities have done. It's been alluded to here, what maximum involvement and aggressive posture from the city is and what spectrum, kind of all the way down to probably at times where Hot Springs has been for all the buildings to have been destroyed that have. But really, a studying of this and an open communication going forward, I think, would be what I would ask, but thank you very much.
Appreciate that and of course, if we do get into the historic preservation business as a community, that's another slot that we'll, we'll have to fund as a city council to watch over that too. But it certainly is something that we need to look at and consider because it is the heart of what makes Hot Springs, Hot Springs. Are there any other communications from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mayor Cotty?
Yes.
I would like to speak to the public, if I may.
Sure.
I apologize ahead of time if I bounce around here, took a lot of notes, I want to try to address them all. To help you understand why you're all here and feeling as passionate as you are about the Welsh Oak building. This topic resurfaced very aggressively for two reasons, and we've been talking about it at Public Works. First reason is the road reconstruction projects that's coming through town. There's going to be a lot of heavy construction that can potentially negatively affect our buildings. So the city recognized that and that some kind of assessment is going to need to be done, not only in that building, but other buildings in town to make sure that they're still standing after the road construction project comes through. The second issue that came up to Public Works is an adjoining property owner approached Councilman Romi of the Welsh Oak building because it will have a direct impact on their property and does the city have any plans for the Welsh Oak building? So as we began talking about it, I learned because I didn't know, that that building has been condemned for 20 years. So when we talk about we as a community, why have we allowed this to happen? Craig talked about it, Robert asked the question, why haven't we as a community allowed it to happen? I think there's two components to that, why have we as a community? There's an inference that the city should have done something by now. I would imagine that had the city got strong-armed and began telling property owners what to do with their property, we'd have been hearing about that. Who are you to tell us what we want to do with our property? So because the city didn't step in for 20 years, the building just continued to deteriorate and that's where we're at. So the Public Works said, well, the prudent thing to do is to have another reassessment. The last one was done in 2013. Let's have another assessment done by the very engineer who did the first one. He understands what the condition of it was then, let's have a reassessment of it. So the council went ahead and approved having that done, which I think is very appropriate. You're all here based on assumptions and rumors and what you've read on Facebook and I think not many facts are associated with that. And that's okay, but what I want to do is share some facts with you so you can go back and understand that the city isn't rushing into this. The council's trying to do our due diligence and make sure that a right decision is made. So what I'm going to share with you is John's summary of the inspection that happened that day. The building's structural condition and integrity has degraded significantly since the previous inspection performed by Olberston Engineering in January 2013. There have been no apparent structural repairs performed or other improvements to the building since last inspection that was documented by Mike Anderson, P.E. Upon entering the building, a portion of the building's wood subflooring was unsupported of human traffic loading, forcing the evacuation of a portion of two of the inspection participants. I believe it's been mentioned, John actually fell through the floor, the first floor, and only because there was a beam directly under where he fell that he straddled, he would have ended up in the basement. Upon entering the open basement, they forced the evacuation of two portion, evacuation of a portion of two of the inspection participants. Upon entering the open basement evacuation, the engineer demanded immediate evacuation of the structure by all inspection participants due to imminent danger to life. Upon Mr. Olberston's exiting the building, he described the structural conditions as extremely unsafe, that the structure could collapse at any time. He required the immediate barricading of the sidewalk and on-street parking at the front and back of the building by the City of Hot Springs Police Department. The City of Hot Springs Street Department arrived and installed requested barricade devices as directed by Mr. Olberston. Additional barricades were requested by Mr. Olberston on the north side of the structure. This is private property and permission to install barricades limiting access to the existing buildings. Business parking lot had not been provided at the time of this summary report. Olberston Engineers responded, John, well stated and I agree with his statement. So the city's not rushing into this, we're doing our due diligence. The final report from the engineers due back in 10 days. We as a council can't make any kind of informed decision until we get that report, we asked for it. My request to you would be, give us an opportunity to take a look at it and come up with some kind of decision or recommendation. To the degree that we're legally able to, my commitment as you, to you is, you will know everything we know, again, that we're legally able to provide. I'm not saying there's something we can't, I don't know. But you need to know exactly what we're considering when we make a decision so that you can offer your input to it. What my request to you would be, give us the opportunity to do that. We understand your passion. I don't want to see a building come down. But the reality is, the city doesn't own it. We're putting ourselves in a position to do what we need to do to make a decision. And I think everyone recognizes that it's not going to be inexpensive to fix that bill. So if your request is the city to assume that responsibility, are there some other services that maybe you don't want us to provide to you because we're repairing a building? Or is there some kind of private partnership that could happen? We have, we have a deadline, we have a two-year deadline when this road comes through. If the building is completed or restored, it at least needs to be stabilized at that point. John has some thoughts about, you know, how that might work. But I think it's important to know that we're not rushing into this. Our intent is not to demolish that building. That may be not, it may not be. But again, give us a chance to look at everything and to share it with you and come up with informed decisions so that you know why we make the decision to do it.
When I spoke to George, not a few days ago, when I first found out about this, I asked if there was a second opinion, a second engineering opinion, and it just sounded to me like it was a done deal, this building is not worth saving, you know, it needs to be raised, and that's what's in the report and so it's on the, on the city webpage. I asked George if we could get a second opinion there, and I would ask again if the council and the administration will look at alternatives to what potentially the engineer report might say. I don't think anybody wants the city to take ownership of a building, but I think the city could take a lead role in helping form a partnership or looking for people that would help things, something, something proactive that we can build on in the future to, you know, get this community back to functioning where the buildings are not misused or unused or falling down. And that to me is a travesty that we just can't consciously let it happen. I don't think the powers of the planning code allow for telling owners what they can and cannot do. I mean, that's 100 years of US history.
Okay, we aren't going to be able to solve this tonight. We've heard the facts and we've heard from you and we get your concerns, Bob. I'd like to go ahead and move on, we've got a lot of business that we need to...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to hold everything up. I just want everybody to know that.
We appreciate your passion and, you know, we hope, we've got a group of passionate people here. Heard the facts from Bob and hopefully we can move forward and if there is any possible way of saving that building, we hope and pray that we can.
And all the other ones too.
And, right.
May I address the public as well?
Sure, go ahead.
I would just like to, I haven't met you personally. My name's Caitlin Turner and I was 2014 graduate of Hot Springs High School. I got my degree and I came back. I think it's an exaggeration to say that teenagers are trying to leave and are trying to flee because they don't like the town. And as I'll share later in the Shedco Report, this town is thriving. My, my day job, I'm one of the county property assessors and I can tell you from fact that building owners in this county don't like government coming in and telling them what to do. I've had many doors slammed in my face, many dogs laid out on me and water turned on on me. We are not trying to tear things down, we're not. We want to save as much as we can, but public safety is a concern. But this town is not dying, it is thriving.
Mr. Mayor? I talked to the owner of the building next to it, Steve Weena, he is really concerned. There's big bolts and washers tying his building to that building. So if that comes down, his building's coming down with it, with people working in it daily. And me as a taxpayer and a citizen, I don't want to see somebody hurt because people want to leave this building up and hopefully fix it. I don't want it tore down, but if lives are in danger, in my opinion, the building's got to come down if the lives are going to be in danger and they can't fix the building. That's all I got to say.
Good, thank you, Craig. And again, appreciate everyone's comments and we will certainly do our best to keep the community informed and look at all options. Thank you. I'd like to move on in the agenda to personnel actions. I'd ask for a motion to approve personnel actions A through B.
Make a motion to approve personnel items A through B.
Say it.
Been moved to the elected to approve those personnel actions. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved. Moving on to committee reports, administrative and finance. Bob and Caitlin?
Admin, planning, and management, on January 13th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Caitlin, Bill, Allison, John, and myself are present as well as members from the public. One old business item I'd like to update you on and that's the 26th Street Water Distribution Project. Letters have been sent to affected property owners identifying the amended costs for the improvement district. Since the original assessment district was approved by council in 2019, three properties have already been sold. Interest for the amended district will be the same as the original assessment, which is 5.25%. Council will also need to consider whether the total assessment should be paid in 10, 12, or 15 equal annual payments and possibly set in February 3rd as the date for a public hearing. Some new business items. Mayor Cotty has been asked by the Chamber of Commerce if he will partner with them to write a letter from the city and the chamber to link cave about the broken elevator. Concern is that revenue for Hot Springs related to tourist visits at Link Cave is down because of the broken elevator. This is to give a recap of her financial report, she gives us the first every month. Some noted items in there, the 612 Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, had a significant increase because of the shredding of brush piles at the landfill, which we've talked about a lot. The 620 Fund, the golf course fund saw an increase in revenue for curb rails, green fees, and passes. And the 621 Fund, the tennis punch fund, this is the first time that revenue in that fund exceeded expenditures. The 2019, the sale of fuel at the airport was $8,000. If these figures continue, minus the original purchase price for the fuel equipment and fuel purchases, it looks like that by mid-year, the city should see a clear profit from the sale of fuel at the airport. This year, the city will combine with the Hot Springs School District and Fall River County for elections. Between March 1st and March 31st are the dates to circulate petitions for mayor and council positions. Because of possible liabilities to the city for unattended use of the area used for brush and yard waste, a possible change in the hours of use for the landfill were discussed and how that would affect the public using the landfill. The hours discussed were 8 to 4 p.m. This year, the city will combine with the Hot Springs School District and Fall River County for elections. Between March first and March thirty-first are the dates to circulate petitions for mayor and council positions. Because of possible liabilities to the city for unattended use of the area used for brush and yard waste, a possible change in the hours of use for the landfill were discussed, and how that would affect the public using the landfill. The hours discussed were eight to four P.M., further discussion is needed regarding the change in the hours of the landfill. We were talking with a private business owner, talked with the committee about the city increasing the licensing fees for secondhand stores. Is that fee made by all secondhand stores in the city? The business owner feels the current fee, a hundred dollars, was too high, the previous fee was twenty-five dollars. The committee explained that all fees charged by the city were reviewed for appropriateness and were increased where necessary to cover the actual cost incurred by the city to provide planned various city services, and discussion will continue regarding the increased fee for secondhand stores and pawnbrokers. The Chamber of Commerce has asked the city for an in-kind sponsorship for this year's August twenty-seventh through thirtieth balloon festival. The city would provide the usual airport grassy area for the launching of balloons, Centennial Park, and associated electricity in Bear Pates, Pasadena. Misty talked with us about the final Federal Labor Standard Act overtime rule, and all employees affected by that rule have been informed how those changes affect their work hours. We talked about potential ordinance modifications, and Misty and John have been working on identifying updates or changes to the city ordinances that are hosted on the American Legal Publishing website, and have identified a number of changes with further review ongoing. If any council members know changes you would like made, let Misty and John know what those changes are, so they can be brought before the full council for your consideration. We also did a review of the Open Gym Recreation donations party from the Mueller Center to determine if the programs are actually being used by the public, and if those programs should continue. Misty also talked with us about a letter she had received from Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo Commercial Banking Group that recommended the city implement fraud prevention services and best practices for the accounts the city has with Wells Fargo Bank. If used by the city, these fraud prevention services and best practices will increase costs to the system and the city. Misty explained the steps the finance office takes to monitor potential fraud risks for the city, and is satisfied these measures are working. Committee recommends no changes to the best practices finances used in monitoring the city finances. Misty also talked about the changes to the city of Hot Springs' basic investment policy, and adding the South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust to the city's basic investment policy. Allison spoke with the committee about the Evans Plunge, considering adding an additional rate for ages fourteen through seventeen for the plunge rate schedule. Proposed rates would be twenty-five dollars for one month, seventy-five dollars for three months, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for six months, and two hundred and twenty-five dollars for twelve months. Committee discussed expanding the age eighteen, and also if this should be a student rate, it would also cover anyone in college as an appropriate ID. And also will continue the discussion with the Evans Plunge Committee. If anyone intends to committee, did I miss anything? All right, Admin Finance meeting will be February tenth, four o'clock at City Hall in the public hall.
Thank you, Bob. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
Next, Airport Advisory Committee will be Thursday, the thirtieth, eight A.M. at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Ron?
Excuse me, Custer Fall River Waste Management met January ninth here at the Mueller Civic Center. Was a lot, contractor manager reports as, no, operation's normal, the underground fire is hard to hold, so they've been burned for some time. We're a little discussing, it was possibly eight and a half years till we built the new cell out there. I guess there's numbers on that here, I mean, I know we talked about installing a grinder, a large grinder out there at the landfill, that would be portable, they could come around these towns and take care of these brush piles. We had a study done on that, they recommended that we not go at this, just with, due to what's coming up in the next nine years, eight, nine years at the landfill. So that's been tabled from now on then. Now I'm going to go to the office here, just sort of kind of what happens at landfill. We're closing up, partial closure of what they call Page Two, which would be the second cell, the three cells. Costs are now going to be somewhere between thirty and seventy thousand dollars. They do that now while they can start, it's activating on their new site. By 2025, that cell, the third cell, will be about ninety percent filled, we have to start construction on the new cell, which will be at a cost of about four hundred and seventy-two thousand and five hundred dollars in today's dollars. And by 2028, they should have, the original three cells will be all filled. So we have to start construction twenty-twenty-six of the new cells. That, in conjunction with the five hundred and some thousand dollar plus projected liability for a grinder, the grinder is not going to happen. Other than that, next meeting will be the twelfth of March, twenty twenty, seven P.M. here at the Mueller Civic Center.
Okay, thank you, Ron, and starting to hear about the grinder.
Yeah, we thought that would really be a good deal, but the maintenance costs on it, it's got, it would, it would break, it's a side project.
Okay. Downtown Historic Preservation Division, Craig?
Hot Springs Historical Commission, met on January eighth. Commission members present were Joe Muller, Caroline Swartzenbach, Steve Weena, and Brian Powers. Present for the city was myself, and Scott Soggy, and citizens of Hot Springs, West Branches there. Meeting was called order five. Minutes were ahead December fourth, meeting, old business is the Walsh Old Building. The commission would like to have a copy of the engineer's report when the city gets The other discussion was that Scott presented some photos of the roof, roofing work being done at DeBronn Hotel. It was in, this does not affect the interior features of the structure, but since the commission has a past, I, the work that the owners of DeBronn to preserve historic features of it, this is of interest to the commission. Discussion followed with no action. Meeting was adjourned at five-thirty, the next meeting is February fifth, five o'clock at the library.
Thank you, Craig. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met on January ninth, twenty twenty. Chris and Tom were there, Casey Crowder was there, Greg Gunwall and Kathy Wren, also present were John and Renee LaFrance. The first item of business was discussing the membership for ages fourteen and seven through seventeen, there was some suggestions as far as the, what would be appropriate as far as cost, and the policy and membership agreement for the weight and cardio room. We went and discussed it with, planning zoning, you're not planning zoning, with admin finance, and so I'll take it back, as Bob said, to discuss it a little bit more with the advisory committee. We did get some information, I think as I've discussed before, from our insurance, there was some suggestion that had kind of been long running, that some of the reasons why a certain age group couldn't use the cardio room or things was based on the office insurance, but we did get clarification that that was not the case. But that, our insurance company did suggest that we have our policies looked at by our lawyer, Mike Garland, so he has those currently in hand, I gave those to him tonight. So we will be looking at those to make sure that we are completely covered and good to go there. Twenty twenty closure is scheduled for March second through the fifteenth, the to-do list is pretty long. We have, plan for the hundred and thirtieth year is doing people cutouts, old, timing people cutouts, so those are going to be painted. There is going to be flooring repair, refreshing the well slide, and repainting the underside, stripping the pool steps and skimmer columns, redoing the pool stair treads in some kind of fashion, they haven't quite figured out exactly how they're going to do that, they're looking at a couple different ideas that would work well. Recrafting the basketball net, hot tub filter replacements, concrete repair, stuff, work in the kitchen's going to be done, the office and the restrooms. Bill Lukens will be coming on one fifteen, that's where it happens, you already did it then, did you know you were doing that?
Yes.
To view an area for the lift to, to access the pool area from the north parking lot door, and additional areas concerned with landscaping, so that was going to be addressed. Maria March is coming on one-ten of twenty twenty to see about updating the poolside logo and possibly other poolside areas. We also discussed the hot tubs, so as you know, one of the focus of the Evans Plunge Committee has been really looking at updating those hot tubs for, the goal would be, if it's approved during budget time, to have twenty twenty-one closure be those hot tubs get updated. So the group did some discussion about what would be most cost-effective, if we could keep the current tubs and just put updated materials around it. So we're going to be really looking in the next two months as far as what materials would make sense, what would be most cost-effective, and at least during, the goal is during budget coming up in August, that there is a thorough plan for those hot tubs that can be addressed to the council. And our next meeting will be February thirteenth at noon at Evans Plunge.
Thank you, Allison, appreciate it. Parks Recreation, Beautification, Cultural Development, Dave?
On our January fifteenth meeting, twenty twenty, here at the Mueller, present was Lori Scherrard, Mark Seig, Chris Koltke, Kathy Wren, and Mr. Adam Heath, and myself, old business. We have the white steel for the dugouts that were going up on the roof and part of the walls, that, we're looking at mid-April to get that all installed. On the tennis courts, can't connect the LEDs, the new kit that we bought for the tennis courts, so what we're going to do is replace the burned-out lights, and in doing the research, we found that if we wait about a year, we could possibly get a lot better LED system, they will actually hook right into the system we have now. But we will be installing new lights, we did have the timer fixed, so we are running for an hour, so if anybody that was going out there and only got twenty minutes, it should be working properly. So please, if anybody goes out there and we have any problems, let us know immediately. But this should take place for the new bulbs that are coming in, you have to understand, they're not like your regular light bulbs, they have a neck on them, it's just about ten inches, so they're a specialty bulb, we are getting those, means we were let down on the LEDs, that'll probably be three to four weeks before we get those all installed. As far as other things on the list, we're looking at, well, Lori touched on the twenty minutes, that was kind of upsetting for some folks, so we did make sure we got that going. On the Evergreen Grant, we are ordering trees, and we are working with John to keep us up to date, so we can do this on the proper due date and get all our stuff in, but we are looking at ordering more trees. So, and then we move on down the list to new business. The True Green Services Proposal for twenty twenty, we reviewed each, each department looked at the cost of, compared to last year, we got a lot better prices this year than we did last year, and so for Butler Park and the other smaller parks, Mark approved that, which all of us, me, Lori, and Mark, all discussed all the different ones, and we approved all the list across the board. The only thing that we had was the library, they're kind of on their own thing as far as that goes, but the Freedom Trail and so forth, we're looking at talking and seeing what, what else could go with that, because we had nothing to go by last year as far as the price on that. So that's, as of right now, it's not really up to here, but we're looking at prices elsewhere. Well, we talked about, Kathy Wren brought up some of the different things that were in the grant, which you just touched on too, also with Parks and Rec, but also pickleball, we have donations that's been coming in, but we have to look at some fees in different areas, and Kathy Wren and myself, if necessary, will be talking with Misty to see what we need to do to get that all corrected, and get ourselves in line with what our expenses are. We also changed the time for the meetings, that Parks and Rec is going to be here still at the Mueller Center, but it'll be at one P.M. when we have our meetings. And that was approved by everybody, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's timeline means I'm talking with city employees, I don't want to be wasting their time, like to get them in, get them out, and one o'clock would work a lot better for them. As far as the Christmas lights with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, we've all been kind of going over this for quite a few months, and we did discuss it last year. We've come to the consensus that it would be a lot better if Keep Hot Springs Beautiful actually kept their lights and maintained their lights, and install and take them down. And a lot of this comes from the cold weather, everybody knows pretty much, with the little wires and stuff like that when you decorate outside, once they're cold, they break, really for me to put city employees to spend time taking them away from, the list is endless of what they do in the community, and to add this on to their back, you could actually, for what we spend, we could actually buy brand-new lights every year. So we would like to, we would like to have this, you know, this process with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, we would work with them in any way we can, but they're putting up, taking down, and the maintenance of the lights, and storage of the lights, we would really like for them to take that back. That's the way it started off in the beginning, that was the original agreement, as time went by, slowly but surely, we started putting them up, then taking them down, storing them, and then you figure amongst everything else that we store, that we use to work on the city, it becomes kind of hard to start storing stuff for everybody else. But that said, that's pretty much done. Eumaker Park, after the Parks and Rec meeting, we had people come in to talk about Eumaker Park, about turning it into a dog park, and we have quite a few folks that are very interested in that, and at the next meeting, we will do that the same way, first Wednesday of next month, one o'clock here at the Mueller Center, pardon me, I don't know exactly what the exact date is on that day, but we would like to have folks come in who's interested in helping and interested in a dog park in our community, please come in, that will be done right after the Parks Committee meeting, and if we all commute together, you can sit through the meeting, and everybody's welcome. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Planning and zoning commission, Allison?
Yeah, before I jump into the planning and zoning meeting, I was just going to, I lost a lot of our historic lovers out there, so I just wanted to let anybody know that if they're interested in ordinances and how they work, and they have ideas about what we can do historically to move on as far as some of the different buildings, as we mentioned, that people don't love having government involved in what they're doing with their buildings, but I'd be more than happy to look at whatever people are finding out there, and have you come to our planning and zoning and start giving us that information so we can start the discussion to see if maybe we can do something for our future to, to look at that, so I'd be happy to at least start that process. Planning zoning met January fifteenth, twenty twenty, let's see, some of my notes are wrong, so, hold on. Okay, Steve Preheim, Wayne Hagman, Scott Soggy was there, and myself, and James Forbord. And we did not have enough people there from the previous meeting to approve the meeting minutes, so they tabled that to approve for the next meeting. There was discussion regarding the planning commission member terms, you'll see in your packets that you have two terms that have expired and are up for vote again, that's Don Olstead and Wayne Hagman. The Turnbull section line discussed, was there, we had the lawyer there to discuss that, vacating the section line and the city limits on the north boundary of lots five and six, the Cold Springs addition of the town, and the recommendation of the, of the commission was to approve vacating and move to, move it forward to the council. Fall River Ranch RV Resort is continuing their process on use on... Fall River Ranch RV Resort is continuing their process on use on review application. There's no update on the Mammoth site at this point. They are continuing work on the P U D., but there was no information, new information to share. We are going to be looking again at the ordinance regarding signage. If you remember, I might have said last time that our ordinance states that it needs to be fifty-one feet, signs need to be fifty-one feet away from each other, but a lot of our lots are fifty feet. And so that makes it really hard to do, so we were going to take a look at that ordinance and do a real good review on that. So our next meeting is Wednesday, February nineteenth at six P M. at City Hall, and anybody's welcome.
Thank you, Allison. Public Safety, Bill?
Okay, Public Safety met on Wednesday, January fifteenth at one P M. at City Hall. In attendance were Mayor Cotty, myself, Bob Nelson, Caitlin Turner, Chief Close, Captain Wayman, John Gregory, Lori Scherrard, and Fire Chief Darkoy. Under Old Business, John is continuing to work on the FEMA grants to address some of the pre-disaster mitigation plan hazards, and those we found out were due on March first, so John has another month to work on his massive to-do list. John, thank you for all that you do. Worked with Chief Close and Captain Wayman on an estimated budget for a school resource officer, and we reviewed that with the committee. Meeting was being pursued with the school superintendent, and Captain Wayman, Bob Nelson, and myself will have that meeting on tomorrow. And then after that meeting, we'll be pursuing meetings with the schools Board Safety Committee in order to get a firm commitment from the school board regarding a school safety officer prior, prior to pursuing funding through a COPS grant and then budgetary support through this council. So we want to work with the council or school board prior to, prior to those next steps. There's been improved response and support regarding the mental health commitment process, and we'll continue to follow those efforts and continue to work to improve that process. The committee agreed to revise the fireworks portion of the fire protection and fire prevention ordinance to align with the South Dakota codified law regarding the dates, the allowable dates for fireworks. South Dakota codified law allows private use of fireworks between June twenty-eighth and the first Sunday after July fourth. That's a significant change from our existing ordinance. They also allow fireworks to be used by individuals between December twenty-eighth and January first. However, within our proposed revised ordinance, there wouldn't be a full prohibition of fireworks if there was a, if the fire danger would warrant it. Currently, South Dakota codified law prohibits the use of fireworks if the fire danger is extreme or above. And so our intention is to, we need to, we had talked about if it was higher above, but then I looked at the codified law and it mentions extreme, so we need to align on that terminology and that degree. And we also were going to mention if we were under a red flag warning. One of the most significant changes we are proposing right now, if you were to violate the fireworks ordinance, it would, you would earn a fifty-four dollar fine. Since we are kind of going with an all or nothing on fireworks and basing our prohibition of fireworks based on fire danger, we are proposing a five hundred dollar fine for a violation of this ordinance. So it's not just, hey, you're shooting a firecracker and that's not a good thing to do. If we're saying you shouldn't use fireworks, it's because it's a danger to the community and it's a serious event, it's a class-two misdemeanor which carries with it a maximum fine of five hundred dollars, and so that's what we're proposing. So we'll be working on that change to the ordinance, and we'll be bringing that to the full council for a lot of discussion, I hope. In that change, we'll also be proposing a change to the gunpowder storage ordinance. I know David's really concerned about that, so. In other business, I'll just move on from that. The committee also reviewed the, the ordinance cleanup language that Bob referred to in Admin Finance. That language dealt with working of prisoners, registration of bicycles, and fees for animal boarding, and additionally, signs erected by the police department. And one of the things we're really trying to do is go through our ordinance is, if it makes sense and if it's enforceable, we want it in there. If it doesn't make sense, if it's not enforceable, let's get it out of there. We tabled our discussion to a later meeting regarding whether or not we needed a ordinance for, regarding drones. I think we're going to have someone from the, is it Forest Service, John, that's going to give us a presentation on that. Under New Business, Chief Close reported that they are having significant issues with the new computers that were purchased, and a meeting will be set up with Black Hills Technology to resolve those issues. On a better note, the police department has received a number of positive comments from the public regarding their extra patrols and activities that they had on New Year's Eve. Chief Close asked the committee if there were any concerns if he drove his departmental vehicle to local school sporting events. He felt that the presence of the vehicle would not only be a positive display, but could also be a potential deterrent to unwanted activity. The committee discussed that and unanimously agreed and authorized Chief Close to, to do that. Chief Close also discussed with the committee his potential participation with the Oglala Sioux Tribe Emergency Management in the search of the two missing Lakota men near Manderson, South Dakota. This participation would be for his time only, at a time when our department staffing was adequate. It would be in partnership with Fall River County, Fall River Sheriff's, Fall River County Sheriff's Office assets. The committee fully supports Chief Close's participation and appreciates his willingness to reach out to the Oglala Lakota Nation. John brought to the committee the South Dakota Department of Transportation sidewalk proposal for highway construction. The current plan calls for crosswalks to be grooved within plastic, either cold applied plastic or preformed thermoplastic at all existing crosswalk locations. We understand that this option will be at no additional cost to the city, and the committee supports his current proposal. A business owner on North River Street had submitted a request for two-hour parking limits on North River Street. The committee does not support parking duration limits, as it does not see it as a safety issue and it is not enforceable. Fire Chief Darkoy was present to discuss the school evacuation plans that are being developed and the role that various city departments may play in those plans, and those discussions will be ongoing. The city administrator had received a request for a traffic control sign in the Baumgart's parking lot at the Pine Hills Access Road. A review of the G I S map indicates that this is private property, and as such, any signage is not the responsibility of the city, but will need, need to be done by agreement between the two private parties. The committee reviewed the proposed changes to Chapter one-one-two regarding second-hand stores that was forwarded and discussed in Admin Finance, and had no issues with the proposed changes that came out of Admin Finance. The meeting ended at four P M., at which time I did get to go to Evans Plunge with John and reviewed some of the proposed access enhancements for emergency response to get into the pool area. And I think what, what they'd like to do would be a very good thing to do. So our next meeting will be Wednesday, February nineteenth at one P M. at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bill. One comment on this, your meeting with the school board. Please ensure that we get the point across that we expect them to also support financially that school resource officer to some extent.
Yeah. Yeah, I've talked with Chief Close and we definitely, yeah, it's, it's not a one-way street.
Okay.
It has to come from both directions, especially if we can get the COPS grant, which is very good for, I think typically three years, that makes it very good. But after that grant is over, we're looking at funding a full-time equivalent, and that's when both parties have to be willing to, to fund. And so, yeah, that, they have to be committed to that going forward.
I just want to ask a quick question about that, too. Do we currently kind of track how much time our officers are spending at the school? And Captain Wayman, maybe you can answer that as well. Are we tracking that at all, so we kind of have a good idea of how, how much time you guys are up there?
No, we're not tracking per minute, but we can get a call log and see how much, you know, what we're up there for calls. Each officer sort of knows how much we're up there during the day. It's usually either Officer Wenscott or myself or Zach Schaefer who are working during those hours, so it'd be pretty easy to get it.
So you feel like we could get a pretty good summary or whatever of how much time you guys are up there? Okay, thank you.
We can get a fast dispatch log, too, so.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Public Works, Bob, great?
Public Works met on January fourteenth. Mayor Cotty, Craig, Dave, John, Tracy, Scott, myself are present. We had a number of new business items. State Veterans Home spoke with John about replacing the fence the city removed during the Twenty-Sixth Street water project. State Home needs the fence replaced because they will need to restrict access to an upcoming solar panel project they will be installing in the near future. They have offered to provide the materials at no cost to see if we will provide the labor. There's approximately eleven hundred feet of fence that needs to be replaced, and John is estimating it will take three days of equipment work and four days of labor. Estimated cost to the city is six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. John will also talk to the State Home about approximately ninety thousand cubic yards of red raft rock that they have on site. Currently, the city has two locations, a flood channel through Hot Springs and Boulder Falls with potential future, with potential future locations that need this type of rock. Bill talked a little bit about it, that is, public safety report. But we had a future business owner talk with the committee about the possibility of implementing a two-hour parking limit along North River Street or installing parking meters. Their concern is having the limited parking spaces along North River Street taken up with employees of adjacent businesses, limiting the parking, parking available for customers. The issue of how the time, how the time limit and our parking meters would be enforced was discussed. Committee explained that currently the city doesn't have the resources to implement either option. Business owner was asked to work through the Chamber of Commerce and with other business owners to determine if there is strong support for a parking limit or meters and the cost to move forward prior to the city's budget meetings in August. Mayor informed the committee about the possibility of airport mechanic for the airport. The individual will perform airplane inspections, which would generate tax revenue for the city. Some modifications of the old hangar would be needed for a space to perform the work, so further discussions are needed. John also talked with the committee about possibly changing hours available to drop off brush and yard waste at the landfill. Because of possible liability issues, no supervision, there are drop-off hours. John recommended changing hours to eight A M., from eight A M. to four P M. The committee will continue this discussion. Committee also discussed future locations for the brush and yard waste. As the area along the bypass is developed, the city needs to consider a different location for the brush and yard waste. One possible location identified by Councilman Rowling is an area adjacent to the current science quarry north of town, so discussions will need to continue on that. Old Business, brush piles. As Misty would say, they're a gift that keeps on giving. I spoke with Fall River Health and the State Veterans Home. Fall River isn't opposed to burning the brush piles, but does have some concerns. The hospital has pre-filters for their medical air handling system that are replaced on a schedule. Currently, the filters are scheduled for replacement on February second and third. There is some flexibility with those dates, so the city would need to work closely with the, with Fall River Health about the timing of any burning. Their air handling system can be put into a mode that recirculates the air within the hospital to reduce the possibility of smoke getting into the hospital. They use automatic doors on the entrance to the hospital, so if smoke were to begin accumulating in the valley, they would have to switch the doors to manual and have someone assist people entering and leaving the hospital. Their main concern is to not burn the piles if there's a possibility of the wind's blowing into the south. State Veterans Home is a concern with potential smoke from the burning of the piles. They can also put their air handling system in their recirculation mode. They have a pile larger than the city's pile they need to get rid of, so they understand the city's dilemma. And the last old business item we had, mayor spoke with the committee about reconstruction of the street in front of Evans Plunge. City currently has twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars owed to them for mining of rock on city property at a science quarry north of town. This money could be used towards repair of the street, but wouldn't be anywhere near enough for the needed repair. Committee feels Simon should bear the full cost of the repair, and our vehicles created the problem. Mayor will talk to Simon about possible remedies to repair the road. Anything else? All right. The next meeting will be January twenty-eighth, one o'clock at City Hall, Public Safety.
Thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Caitlin?
We met January seventeen at the Red Rock. It was our annual meeting of the memberships, our banquet dinner. So I'm just going to give highlights, because it was a very, very good dinner. I haven't got an official roll call of who all signed in or bought tickets, but just by head count that I did at the table, there's at least seventy people there, including myself, Bob Nelson, Bill Lukens, and John. We heard updates from Golden West. After two thousand and twenty, the entire city of Hot Springs should be wired for fiber optics, so that's exciting. We heard from Gene Wenscott from Baumgart's. He thanked the city and Shedco for their help. They're glad to be in Hot Springs, and they are hitting all their projections for what they thought they would do. So that's exciting, good to hear. We're glad to have them here. As everyone's probably aware, Andrea Powers is the executive director for Shedco. And we heard highlights from the president of Shedco, Joan Howard, about all that Andrea has accomplished this year. And it's not an inclusive list, but she's had twenty-seven separate business assistance meetings. There, she's been helping have workshops for kids to apply for tech schools, and that's still an ongoing thing she does. She continues to offer small business workshops for our businesses in town, continue working towards implementing the B B and B grant, and she obviously helped assist with Baumgart's. We're really just incredibly thankful for her to have such a talented and passionate individual in our city. And she was presented with a certificate for her efforts. Just more things that happened this year that we're excited for, the grant being broken on the Kent Avenue Housing Project. The Shedco website is working well. It's had over seventeen hundred visits this year. After South Dakota, our top visits that are accounted for are by California, Texas, and Colorado. They're the people that look at our website the most. We heard from eight different businesses in town who have added employees to their staff this year, creating more jobs. We had a guest speaker, Dr. Griffiths, who was the president of Dakota State University. Just some good things we heard about their cybersecurity program. And then we adjourned at eight eighteen P M. So I thank everyone who came. I think it's just an exciting thing to hear about Hot Springs and how we're thriving, the different businesses in town. It was just a very successful evening.
Okay, thank you for that encouraging report, Caitlin, appreciate it. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, there's nothing to report. And Volunteer Fire Department, John?
Volunteer, excuse me, Volunteer Fire Department met.
Volunteer Fire Department met 14th of January. Truck report, they only had four calls last month, so that's good. The operator training, the trucks and aerial maintenance is already done. You probably just got yourself up to speed on that. Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department and the county, our county fire are working on grants to upgrade their search and rescue equipment. There's apparently, the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department is spiritating this operation, so we'll see how that progresses. So working on the fire alarm and verification signal for the school propane tank up there, which is kind of, they want to come up with a way to differentiate between a propane leak and actual fire, because that's going to determine how you react to that fire. If it comes green in or the siren light flashing, and it's a propane leak, you're probably going to have a fire in addition to the leak. So they want to come up with some way to differentiate. They're working on that. Okay, for anybody that's interested, there's the annual Homer Plunge as a volunteer for the Edgemont Volunteer Fire Department, 25th of January at 2:00 PM. So they're working for all of you. Out there. Okay. I'll see you there.
Is that at Evans Plunge?
I don't know, it's going to be inside the river or in the reservoir or whatever.
Some little dam just outside Edgemont, I guess. Good luck with that.
So.
Busy that day.
Next meeting will be on the 2nd Thursday, February 70th, Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, Ron. I just wanted to note, it took us over half hour to go through the committee reports. And I'm not complaining about that, but I just want to point that out to the public and our council, that our committee system is working. We're addressing issues and problems and coming up with solutions and recommendations so that hopefully our, the business that we take care of at the council meeting has been researched and the information is readily available to all of the public and to the council. So again, I want to thank all of you for the work you do under committees. Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, we have a second reading of ordinance 1206. That's transferring those two lots from Royal Service to Urban Service. Again, indicative of the building that's going on, the growth that's going on here in Hot Springs. I'd accept a motion to approve that second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1206. An ordinance transferring two lots from Boulder Falls addition from Royal Service District to Urban Service District.
They moved and seconded to make that, approve that second reading. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Ekethy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritterbush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is approved. Their second reading also of ordinance 1207, and that's the alcohol, to limit the alcohol consumption at Brookside Park. Again, we looked at that at the last meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1207.
Make a motion for a second reading of ordinance 1207, an ordinance revising the title, 1X General Regulations Chapter 92 for Parks and Recreation Section 92.12, possession, use of consumption alcoholic beverages in glass containers to add an exemption for Brookside Park.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that second reading. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Ekethy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritterbush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Okay, those ordinances are approved. Moving on, resolutions 2020-4. You do have a copy of that in your packages. That's the Angostura Irrigation District Water Service Contract, provide irrigation water to the airport. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve 2020-4 Resolution to approve the 2020 irrigation Angostura Irrigation District Water Service Contract.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that contract. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. We move on to new business. Item A is a possible motion and discussion to approve the services in 2020 with True Green, and those would be at Butler Park, the library, and Evergreen Cemetery. I'd ask for a motion to approve that agreement.
Make a motion to approve the agreement for services in 2020 with True Green to include services at Butler Park of $7,825.20. Hot Springs Public Library of $250. And Evergreen Cemetery for $3,255.00.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that agreement. Parks and Rec, what would be your recommendation?
This is one of the best prices that we've had in a while, so Parks and Rec would definitely support this.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a premier pyrotechnics contract in your packages. That's for fireworks for the 4th of July. We get a 12.5% additional product if we order early. We also are hoping that our bid group will also contribute an additional $5,000 so we can increase the amount of fireworks that we do have at this year's celebration. I would ask for a motion to approve that contract.
I make a motion to approve the 2020 Premier Pyrotechnics Contract for fireworks authorized the finance officer to make the payment in advance in order to receive the 12.5% additional product.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that contract. Again, you'll note that that contract is for three years. Misty did get an email from the company saying that if for some reason the city of Hot Springs would opt to not have fireworks on the 4th in, within, say, 2021 or 2022, we can opt out of that with no penalty. Are there any other discussion or questions concerning that contract? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that contract is approved. We also have in your packages our basic investment policy. And what we want to do is add South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust to that list of authorized financial dealer and institutions. I'd accept a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve revised city of Hot Springs basic investment fund policy to add South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust to the list of authorized financial dealer and institutions.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that investment policy. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have some hearings to set, the first one being item D, schedule a hearing for a use permit on review for Michelle Erickson to operate a home daycare at 1446 Clark Alley in Hot Springs. And we would like to set that for the 3rd of February at 7:30 PM. I'd accept a motion to set that hearing or schedule that hearing.
Make a motion to schedule a hearing for a use permit on review from Michelle Erickson to operate a home daycare at 1446 Clark Alley in Hot Springs for February 3rd at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to schedule that hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E is also another hearing for a use permit on review for Steve Shimonik of Quality Real Estate to operate an RV park and campground. And that's on about 12.5 acres of undeveloped property located on the bypass, truck bypass. And we would set that hearing for 7:40 PM on February 3rd. And I'm excited to have this opportunity for Hot Springs. Establishment of that RV camp could get more people into our community. Hopefully, a lot of snowbirds will come here and spend their summers playing golf, going to the plunge, eating at our restaurants, and enjoying our wonderful sandstone buildings. And so, we do have Todd Wilson and his wife here that have dreamed this great thing up for us, and that we would like to go ahead and set a hearing to consider that. I'd accept a motion to set that hearing.
Make a motion to schedule a hearing for use permit on review for Steve Shimonik, from Steve Shimonik, of quality real estate to operate an RV park and campground on approximately 12.5 acres of undeveloped property located on US Highway 18 truck bypass in Hot Springs for February 3rd at 7:40 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to establish that hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that hearing is set. We also have, as Bob mentioned, the amended assessment roll for the 26th Waters Distribution District, and we need a hearing for that. And we would set that on the, from 3rd of February at 7:10 PM. I'd accept a motion to set that hearing for the February 3rd meeting.
Make a motion to schedule a hearing on the amended assessment roll for the 26th Street Water Distribution System Improvement District for February 3rd at 7:10 PM.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to set that hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that hearing is set. We also have before you a motion and discussion to appoint, reappoint Wally Cottro to the bid board for another three-year term from 2020 to 2022. Wally has been very active on that bid board, and I would ask that you would consider reappointing him to that position. I'd accept a motion to do that.
I make a motion to reappoint Wally Cottro to the bid board for a three-year term, 2020 to 2020, should it be 2023?
No.
No, okay, so that's how it works out? All right, I'm done with my motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Wally to that bid board position. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also. Wally's here.
He wasn't there. Can't see nothing out there, really.
We also have two individuals I contacted, both Dawn and Wayne, and they're willing to serve another five-year term. They've been active members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd ask for a motion to reappoint Dawn Olstad and Wayne Hagman to that commission.
I make a motion to reappoint Dawn Olstad and Wayne Hagman to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term, 2020 to 2024.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to make that reappointment. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are reappointed. Item I, we do have a motion here before you about burning the brush piles at the city maintenance facility. We did have a sincere curveball thrown our way today. I contacted DNR, Don Roskowitz, who said we do not have a permit, our city maintenance facility does not have a permit to burn those brush piles. Checking with codified law, I know John has checked South Dakota codified law that we are allowed to burn. Fire people who are here tonight, it's also mentioned that we're allowed to burn. So we would like to go ahead, and I'd ask, Bob, if, I believe your recommendation is that we would table this?
Yes.
Okay. I'd accept a motion to table item I. And as we do table it, I would like to get some input from, and I appreciate you all being here and sitting through all of our meeting tonight, but talk about the procedures and so forth that we would use should we be able to get this ironed out and burn brush at our maintenance facility. So I'd accept a motion to table item I.
I'll make a motion to table the burning of the brush piles of the city maintenance facility and send it back to Public Works for further review. And I'm done.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table that motion. At this time, though, I would like to ask for discussion on that prior to us voting. If fire people could come forward and just speak on some of the things that we've discussed about the safety issues, the dissipation of smoke, and how we go about assuring that we have minimum interruption to our community. And if you come forward for the mic so that we can.
I can, but I can talk loud enough so everybody can hear me.
Yeah, well, we've got a camera, too. You're on candid camera, so.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that picks that up.
Okay. Steve Besser from South Dakota Wildland Fire. We were asked by the city works folks to come in to the last city works meeting and give them just some input on trying to burn the pile. The things that you need to have in place, basically, to burn this pile is you have to have the right weather conditions. We utilize mixing height, which is how high the smoke will rise into the atmosphere. Smoke dispersal, which is how well that smoke disperses once it hits that upper level of where it's going to rise in transport winds. Without those things, during the daytime, you're going to end up with smoke in town. Nighttime, it's not going to matter, especially in the season where you're going to have to burn it. And even in the summertime, most often in the evening, when it cools off, when the sun goes down, the smoke's going to drop. It's going to be in town. You can't avoid that. There's really nothing you can do about it besides move the pile somewhere else and burn it. Where it's not in town, I just actually returned from a week-long training for smoke management in Colorado last week. There are some modeling options that we have to actually look at where the smoke's going to go under the bright weather conditions, what is, gives us an idea what it might impact as far as the hospital, the system living, or the veterans. And then we can also, you know, work with the state's fire meteorologist for you to find out, you know, through forecasts and stuff, when the, when that, when those weather conditions are going to be the best. You know, we just, basically, we're just here to give just some recommendations, you know. The final call is yours, but, you know, I appreciate folks asking for input from us. We're glad to have the ability to help you out with this, and hopefully you can make it happen after you get the DNR stuff taken care of. And like I said, you're not. And like I said, you're not going to get away from having some smoke in town. The pile's been cleaned up a lot. It should burn well. The more heat that you can put into the pile right away and get that good column of smoke up, get it out of town. If you can get good consumption and break the pile up the next day with the material that's still hot. And, you know, if the potential is there to try and wet that down early, get that cooled early so that you can minimize the smoke impact to the community. That would be a good possibility if that's, if that's, you know, that comes as a, as something that you might be able to do. You won't know until the next day. But that's just kind of what we had from when we had the discussion with the committee. And, you know, as I said, once, once you get through the stuff that you need to get through, you know, if it's decided, if you're still looking at moving forward, don't hesitate to give us a call and we'll help you out wherever we can.
We sure appreciate, first of all, for you being here tonight and also being on board to assist us in this effort because it's a very concerning issue. And that's something why we're coming before the council to have the council approve it. Dave, I want to thank you for your input. I know you've had some experience in that and Public Works has worked it. One thing that we will insist on, that we do have a good chain of command to make a decision because it will be weather dependent and it'd be something that we'll have not a lot of time to contemplate the right term if we are allowed to burn, so.
I think working all together and having our, which we discussed in meetings of having our schedule, our programs put in place and working together. And it's good to have you here. So there is some education. The public knows that we're doing the best we can, making the best decisions we can and working with you and all your backgrounds and we're doing so. And I appreciate you great.
Couple of questions, just for our benefit, for the public's benefit. Can those, can a pile be consumed in a day?
A pile that's that size is hard to tell. You continually, you still continually have people piling onto it. Okay, so now you're putting green material into a pile that was fairly dry. Number one, that's going to create more smoke. Number two, it's harder to consume that green fuel. That can be a combination. And as large as the pile is, I think you're going to have some residual. I think you very well could have enough heat there that second day that you wouldn't be able to, you know, you would be able to move it a minimal amount, you know, take equipment in there and actually try and spread it out to dissipate the heat and make everything burn down faster. But with a pile of that size, you could end up with a really deep ash bed. It might take a while. That's, that's one of the risks that you run into. That's one of those things with having that large a pile. The only other way you could do it is break it up into smaller piles. Well, if you break it up into smaller piles, you're going to burn multiple times. So what do you do? You want to burn multiple times and maybe have a little less smoke? Or you want to burn it one time and get it over with? That's, that's your options. That's basically it.
Thanks. And I think too, one of the things that Mr. Roskowitz brought up from D E N R is a concern for people with C P, C O P E, that they suffer greatly when a municipality or near a populated area does, does burn. And that's one of their considerations in giving permits which to burn in an urban area. We will table it and keep, keep this item on, on the agenda and appreciate all the work that has been done to try to get this done.
I think Dar has a comment.
If you sit here all night, I'm going to talk.
Sorry, Derek, I didn't. Not trying to shut you out.
The, the time you talk is not representative of the time you sat.
Just did you give any indication from the D E N R how quick this permit is taken?
No, it didn't. I, I didn't pursue, you know, how to go about. I just was asking whether we were permitted and they said, no, our facility does not have that permit. And the questions that had been brought up, you know, I think we need to question further whether, you know, we're, we're in compliance with South Dakota codified law. According to our research says that we do. So we need to get that ironed out. And then if we do need a permit, then we need to go about looking at it.
Because you know, if that's a thirty, forty-five day process to get this permit, we're starting to fall into maybe that in the season.
So Dar, you're saying that like this next little bit is kind of the key time to do it?
If this permit takes, is extended, I mean, you know, it's just that you've done your due diligence and yeah, rubber stamp, but the way you go, it's not a big deal. Now whenever the weather's right, the weather's right.
Yeah.
I've never seen the state government live that fast ever, so I mean.
And we could be very well stuck in a catch twenty team between the state and the federal, you know.
Because I mean, if it's a forty-five day process to get this permit through, then we're going to start getting into March weather, who's, you know, I mean, because the state, State Wildland Fire has got a great set of rules about when you burn, when you don't. It's very complicated when the chips burned if you have a small pile, which is one of the things.
Sure. And I think conversions are less in March, yeah.
Hopefully it gets some sort of bid.
Thank you.
Mayor Conley?
Yes.
I've always got something. For the, for the council, what I had used to, you know, think that the city should be able to burn was the fact that we've done before. And then looking at codified law, Mayor and John were talking about that. The codified law that I looked at was thirty-four eight dash six dash one dot six. Open burning is allowable unless prohibited by federal law, subject to chapter thirty-four eight dash one. By municipalities of five thousand or less or by counties for persons. By counties for persons living within the county but outside the boundaries of municipalities. If the municipality or county facility does not receive solar waste for more than fifty miles outside its boundaries. So we seem to fit that category. So that was what I was going on as far as, you know, being able to burn these piles. And then the mayor had mentioned that, you know, the permit comes up and that needs to be resolved. So that was why I asked for it to be tabled so we could go back and take a look at these and see what we can do. What I've learned in the short time I've been on the council is just because we've done something before doesn't mean that we should have or we should continue to do that. So we need to get this right.
And we're learning.
Yeah.
We have mistakes and we're all learning.
And then because we did offer the public an opportunity to make comments about how they feel about burning or not burning, I received an email from Frank Burkholtz at one-one-one-three Clubhouse Drive in Hot Springs. And I'm comfortable reading it because he says, I am working out of town this week or I would have attended your meeting. So he shared his opinion. This is what he has to say about burning the piles. I would like to ask the city to start burning the brush pile again. If we do it every year, there would not be much of a bother. People would bear their problems and the former hospitals seemed to tolerate the smoke when the fire had burned in Montana for three months in two thousand eighteen. The amount we spent on chipping would seem to be better used in road repair or water sewer needs. As trees become more mature and houses continue to be built on the edges of hot springs like mine and golf course, the need for a cost-effective answer for brush disposal will continue to grow. How to do it? I am not any type of an expert, but it seems that we burn on a fifty-degree day when the smoke rises and the fire actually burns instead of smoulders. That would help with the length of time the fire burns. Also in the past, we burned when there was a thermal inversion and the smoke just lays over the town. Anything to possibly avoid, another thing to possibly avoid, at the bottom line, burn it. So he would have shared that with us tonight as his statements are on the record.
Is there room to put the green pile somewhere different so we can separate the two? There is at this point, so we could call, put a sign up that says new, new stuffs.
We've got the old derby draft that they have one of the big brush piles on the yard and it's been used in the past and we can start separating that out and that would be a great benefit to us.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? We'll vote on tabling item I. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will be tabled. We also have two other items, travel requests, first of all, for Sedell Newhart to attend the National Safe, Safe Manager Certification Training in Rapid. You've got that request in your packages. I'd accept a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel training request from Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, front desk attending Sedell Newhart to attend the National Safe Manager Certification Training in Rapid City, March third, two thousand twenty.
Second.
They've moved and seconded to approve this training request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And final item on our new business is Jason Happy going to the superintendent's conference in Sioux Falls. Ask for a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve travel training request from Jason Happy, Southern Hills Golf Course Superintendent, to attend the South Dakota Golf Course Superintendent Association Spring Conference in Sioux Falls, March second to March fourth.
Second.
They've moved and seconded to approve this travel request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Finance Officer, report, Misty.
Thank you. A lot of what I was going to talk about has been discussed already in the many committee reports. And the mayor talked about how important these committees are. There's a lot of power in this structure. And I also thank you for the time that you take and the attention that you give to making sure that the things that come before the council in these public meetings are well discussed and well researched. So I, I just think that deserves reiteration and it was on my notes to talk about. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing it up. And the time that you spend in these committees and discussing these topics helps us all and helps us represent the public and the community and I appreciate it. The finance office has been working on our two thousand nineteen financials. Inventories are done, almost done with the cash reconciliations. Today, I finished rolling forward our debt. I sent confirms to all the places that need to confirm with our auditors the numbers I'm representing in our financials. Now that our second payroll is complete, I'll begin working on the accrued payroll calculations and the subsequent entries. Also our accrued leave liabilities. I have posted the internal water and sewer usage to all the departments. And now we're working on calculating water, wastewater and solid waste receivables. There's much more to be done. I swear I spend a lot of time in the first few months doing things nobody understands why I do to make our financials accurate and report the way the general accepted accounting standards require. I will provide updates as the steps are completed. And those of you that are looking for the final reports for the departments that you're interested in, although I can provide you reports today and tomorrow, they're not final until all of these calculations are complete. I wanted to give an update on the elections. We are combining with the school and the county. We have a number of seats open this year. Our mayor announced at the last meeting that he will not be running again. That's a two-year term. In Ward one, Ray Ekoffe, in Ward two, Bill Lukens, will both be up for two-year terms. In Ward three, Ron Richards has a two-year term. Allison Ritter Bush was appointed, so there's a one-year term in Ward three. And then the same in Ward four, Bob Nelson, a two-year term, and Caitlin Turner, who was also appointed, there's a one-year term. You can begin circulating nominating petitions if you're interested on March first. Last day to do that is March thirty-first. The number of voters required on the petition is determined by the number of registered voters on January fourteenth of the year of the election. In Ward one, that number this year will be thirty-three. In Ward two, that number this year is thirty-two. In Ward three, it's thirty-one. And in Ward four, it's twenty-seven. And then for the mayor's seat, it's fifty. Anybody interested in circulating nominating petitions or getting more information about the election is welcome to come to the finance office at City Hall and discuss that with anyone in that office. We're happy to talk about all the different things that you can do if you are interested in helping to serve your city. We have been working on PCI compliance. There are scans and attestations reported. That has to do with our merchant processing. We now have three different merchant processors for the city. We tried to consolidate that, but for various reasons, we, we weren't able to stay consolidated. We have one processor at the airport, one at the golf course, and then one for Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and City Hall. It's real important to stay compliant with those PCI standards and it has to do with safety and security for merchant processing. We are also scheduled for a workers' comp payroll audit. That's scheduled for February twenty-seventh. This is a real important and fun audit for us. It does help determine how a refund is calculated. We pay our workers' compensation at the beginning of the year. You approve that if first January claims, I mean, the first batch of claims for January. This will be reviewing all two thousand nineteen payroll. They take overtime pay, holidays and holiday pay, on-call pay, call-out pay, and implement weather pay and refund the cost of those salaries and only calculate that as an hour work instead of for the pay amount that we use. So I say it's fun because we get a refund after they're all done with that audit. And so it's real important to us that we calculate those numbers correctly. And they do come in and audit looking at our payroll reports and our time cards to make sure that we accurately reflect that information. We are moving forward on the total compensation statement. Bob and I have been working on that since our wage study. This compensation statement will provide employees of the city details, not just what's on a W two statement for earnings, but the total compensation provided to them when they work for the city. And I think it's going to be a powerful tool and I'm looking forward to being able to share it with our employees. And we're still reviewing and revising some outdated ordinances. That was mentioned in several of the committee reports. We listen to the public when they come in and speak and we're identifying more and more ordinances that maybe were written back in a time that we don't live in anymore. And so in addition to codifying our ordinances, we've taken some time and now are sharing with each committee some opportunities for maybe revising those just a little bit more. In addition, our website is still undergoing some changes. Again, I ask the public and council, if you notice anything not working well or outdated on the website, please share it because we're continuing to update that to make it as user-friendly and up-to-date as possible. Bob gave a little review of the airport fuel revenues for two thousand nineteen. I did a summary for the Admin Finance Committee. I am excited that we should be receiving clear profit on some of those sales by the middle of next year. We did receive notice that the terminal that we use for processing those purchases is going to be out of date and no longer serviceable this year. The cost of the fueling system and upgrades included, as long as we don't have to replace the terminal, mid-year this year, we should be, we should be in a position where we're starting to generate revenue off of the airport sales. And that's all I have for now. It's been a long meeting, so thanks for sticking with us.
Thank you, Misty. Our city minister, John?
I'll be great also. A lot of these items were hit earlier by, by the committee members. We are working on all these different ordinances that need to be updated. And it's not just making a word change or two here and there. It's, you gotta kind of look at the bigger picture. It's been in place for a while. We need to think about the long-term effects of it. The West Show Building has been on radar since the fight out here. Part of my attention because the South Dakota Department of Transportation is concerned about vibration front construction. Could play the building now. That's a significant concern now. That will continue to be a major player in our discussions with the D O T. I had the opportunity to visit the state. Very interesting meeting with the representatives at the state veteran's home. Went to Chamber of Commerce, began discussions with the balloon festival planning, also discussed the Wind Cave elevator situation. Got to meet the new board members that will be taking over for the Chamber of Commerce. The Evans Plunge Advisory Board and the discussion of the youth category of age 14 to 17, trying to catch that youth, that youth margin that go to our schools and want to use our weight rooms. And I think it's a great idea that we encourage the youth in our communities and use our facilities. Also the Big Shetland landing we got coming up in March, all the things that go along with that, it's a big long list, as I was saying. Our airport advisory people, we've got the fuel system operational, it seems we're doing what was expected of it. We've got the grazing RFP coming up in 2023. If you're going to have a mechanic who's interested in working under our airport, that's great news. As far as the South Dakota Department of Transportation goes, we've got pedestrian crosswalks, they will be greening and they will have reflective tape. And we've begun the discussion now of revising Jennings Bridge and the construction of that part. Had a meeting this, this last week with Sayer Engineers, they're DOT's consultant on the vibration monitoring of our buildings. And they went door-to-door trying to find sandstone building owners that were interested in their participation in state monitoring. That sums it up, thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Again, for my comments, just reiterate, we've had a good, passionate discussion concerning West Hill building and hopefully we can come to a very favorable conclusion. I did have an opportunity to meet with the acting superintendent at Wind Cave, Mr. David Thompson. We discussed our concerns and they're certainly concerned and working the elevator issue very hard. We're concerned obviously on its impact on getting visitors into Hot Springs this summer. They have terminated the previous service contract that was unable to get the elevator repaired sufficiently. They've had a contractor come in and do a study. They were preparing a report so that they can get a contract written for someone to come in and repair the thing correctly. They expect completion by May. We asked if there was anything that we could help that would notify us. For example, if things get bogged down in the procurement area of the federal, their, their bureaucracy, perhaps a letter encouraging that stack of paper to be moved up in the pile would, would help and we'd certainly be willing to write a joint letter between us and the chamber to ensure that got done. One of the bonuses of that meeting was Mr. Thompson, his job in Omaha, where he comes from, is with the National Park Service Rivers, Trails and Conservation Organization. And they actually work outside the national park in communities like ours to assist in establishing river recreation, trails, conservation projects. And he was very excited at what we are doing along Fall River, along River Street, getting that river cleaned up. So there may be some assistance and support and grants or support in us getting grants through that program or through that organization. So we will work very closely and he's willing to work with us to assist in that area. I think it's also important that, again, we keep our, our eyes focused on the future. There's enough problems that come up every day that we can be like in that carnival where we're, we're stamping those heads that keep, keep popping up. But it's also very important that we look, look ahead. I know as a flight instructor, that's one of the things that you always try to teach is fly ahead. You don't, you keep ahead of the airplane. When you're going about 500 miles an hour, you want to be thinking, you know, not what you just passed, but what you're coming up on because that keeps you, keeps you safe. And I think that's important for the city also. And I think, you know, we've had a big discussion here on the sandstone buildings and getting them filled. We cannot make that happen. We can create an atmosphere that allows that to happen. And one of the ways that we're trying to do that is with a suspended sidewalk and getting that river cleaned up and having access to it so we do have a gathering point in our downtown, giving people an opportunity, more of an opportunity to spend time in our community. And I think that's a way in a free market society, things work. If there's people and businesses that are successful, those sandstone buildings will be filled. And so we need to keep our eye on that ball and make sure that we're looking at opportunities that we can enhance that draw to get businesses started and keep them, them working. I think one of the big things that we'll be considering in a hearing next, our next meeting, is with the RD campground. And so I just encourage everyone to, along with handling those day-to-day problems that come up, to continue to keep working and keep looking to the future because I believe our best is yet to come here in Hot Springs. With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Then moved and seconded, we adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
See everybody that's on the Capitol January 2nd, we have a deadline.